Call to order. Dr. Deegan, the Plunge?
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll please.
Mr. Sherram, Dr. Bridges?
Here.
Mr. Jester?
Here.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Here.
Ms. John?
Colonel Curtis?
Here.
Do we have any special guests?
No special guests today.
Architects report?
And no architect.
How about a departmental report?
Yes, for the departmental report, we have an update. This is Phase Two, Office of Education Chronability School Performance Review. This is Part Two of Chapter Four with the Business Operations, and we'll have Ms. Barbara Ellis, Paula Deel, and Jean Hastings teaming up on this.
You should have in front of you copies of the document, and it will outline everything that we're going to speak to you about. But what I want to say first of all is that I am brand-new, presented by the Senate. We have question number six, which has to do with payroll and with the HR office. So we're going to continue with question number one. Thank you. Continue with question number one, and then we'll go to question number fifteen. This process began in May of 2015. We collected data. We sent that to School Performance Review. They reviewed it. They came for an onsite visit of all times in June of 2015, and that's not necessarily the quietest time in HR and in the finance office, because we're trying to out-process people and in-process people. We've received our first review in October, and as we gave that information back, we were thinking, there's so many opportunities here that we can do things differently. And so as we went through this report, we were looking for those opportunities, because a three-day review is not nearly enough time to catch up with everything that's going on in HR and payroll, and you'll hear that as we give our report tonight. So as we begin, I'm going to start with number one. Develop desk procedure manuals for the finance, human resources, and payroll departments, and then cross-train until at least two staff members in each department can accurately and independently perform each of the major tasks. And as I do that, I'm going to show you, this is one of our documents, and I will put this on the table if you would like to see that, our Lawton Public Schools Human Resource procedural manual. And as I put this over, you're welcome to go through it, and then the girls will begin. And I didn't introduce the one of them, Jean Hastings in human resources and Paula Deel in payroll.
Hi. Good evening, members of the board. Number one is to develop the desk manual, as Ms. Ellis has already spoken. Human Resources has completed a first draft. First draft because it will be ongoing, as you notice, things that we thought we had included that need updated, small procedures that you don't think of because they only happen once a year. But we do agree, as recommended, the plan to implement this. Cross-training in human resources has not taken place at this time due to the lack of people in position. Right now, we have three secretaries, and out of that, we have one that has a year experience, one that has slightly less than a year, and one that's brand-new. So until they have their position completed, where they feel comfortable in that position, then cross-training is a little too much for them at this time.
We in payroll, we're glad to receive this recommendation. It's actually a goal that I've had for payroll for a long time. And we are actively working on the desk procedures. I feel like we're about two-thirds complete in our department. And then we are doing the cross-training as time allows. There's a lot of deadlines, continual deadlines in payroll, so I think that'll be like a one-to-three-year process, and that's pending no staff changes.
On question number fifteen, develop and publish a central office organization chart that provides clear delineation of roles, responsibilities, and reporting relationships. We currently have, and we've always maintained, a central office organization chart, but we usually don't publish it because it changes so quickly. So we've not placed this chart available for public viewing on our website. This is one of the opportunities that I spoke of, and what we are going to be doing this year is reviewing all of the job responsibilities for every individual during the month of September. And once we have completed the job responsibilities, we feel that we can offer that information publicly, so we plan to have this available as soon as possible, hopefully by October. It is imperative that the shifting of duties shifts with the positions, and that's where sometimes we lose some of our duties or some of our responsibilities end up in the wrong department.
Recommendation number sixteen, replace the current ad-update form with an online consolidated daily action report that communicates the vital information needed for processing employee actions. Human Resources, through the cooperation of both human resources and payroll, spreadsheets have been developed and are now used in both offices for consistency. In addition to the suggestion made in the SPR, HR is working with the Media Center in developing a work order system to notify all parties of the notification of employment changes in real time. Right now, much of that information is taken off of the agenda, the personnel reports that's in the board meeting. Sometimes that's a week or so in arrears, and we've got somebody in our buildings that we've done badges and that kind of stuff, but it's a laborous process right now, but that will make it much easier. Everyone will get that notification at that time.
What we've done for the time being is we've replaced the written, the handwritten ad-update form that used to be processed in HR. We've replaced it with an Omni Form, and it's still processed in HR and sent over to payroll, and then payroll audits it and enters everything into the Olio system. And then all the changes are authorized by HR, of course, and then payroll enters what comes over our way. And then we have edit reports that we run, and we actually send, you know, like she said, reports back over to HR. HR and payroll both are responsible for making sure that everything is accurate and entered the way HR wanted it to be. Number seventeen, recommendation is assign the payroll department sole responsibility for auditing employee payoff amounts and all other items associated with the employee pay. Also exclusively use the Olio Human Resources Management System for the calculation. We actually rejected this recommendation, and the reason is we like our checks and balances. The way Olio is, the way we have it set up right now, HR personnel are the only ones that can actually add an employee to the system, and then they have no, they only have read only version of the ad jobs and pay. So on the other hand, payroll cannot add an employee to the system. We can only do the changes that HR authorizes on the jobs and pays. And so we feel like that gives us complete checks and balances. Again, we make sure that both departments check all the data and make sure it's entered correctly. We have used some auto-pay changes that Olio has, and it gives us a little trouble every month. It'll try to pay back, and when it gets to somebody's, the end of their contract, it'll try to pay that money back if they've been into a situation where they've had negative wages, maybe for a suspension or even for stock leave. And we don't want them to get their money back at that point. So we're not recommending using the Olio calculations at this time.
Number eighteen is revise procedures with regard to providing pay options to new employees being hired mid-year. We rejected this recommendation, and I wasn't real clear what charismatic, what kind of recommendations they wanted us to offer for the mid-year employees. The way our full-time benefit and employees are paid, they get the same monthly pay every month, no matter how many days are in the pay period. So we like to maintain that consistency, and when an employee is hired mid-year, we try to keep them on the same one-to-one pay for as many pay periods as we can. Sometimes that means the first pay that they get is actually a partial payment, but that eliminates the possibility of their pay decreasing the next year when they're working a full contract year. So we think that's best interest for the employee. Number nineteen, excuse me. Adopt staffing standards and then adhere to them. Currently, we do have staffing formulas in place for custodial, secretarial, assistance, and child nutrition employees. As with most things, there are exceptions that need to be made to accommodate situations and needs for both the employee as well as the students. Number twenty, work to reduce employee absenteeism through the use of an improved absenteeism tracking program. Right now, we use a spreadsheet to manage the absences. Any medical leave that comes in, we track that. We make that information as far as that we do have documentation for the person to use the sick leave. We make that available prior to each payroll, to the payroll department, so that they know that is an appropriate leave. If there's leave that's taken that they do not have that documentation for, they notify the human resources department. Also with our leave management system, the change that we made back in May, that will help in keeping that absenteeism tracked. Recommendation twenty-one, begin requiring all certified staff to report all leave in the SubFinder's ESOP system and transition to using electronic data for payroll purposes, eliminating the current Scantron sheets. And we accepted this recommendation with modification. We currently use our SubFinder ESOP system only to locate a sub. Well, there are several certified staff members that do not require subs, so their leave would not be documented in that software at this time. But we are currently evaluating a time and attendance software that would eventually eliminate the scanner sheets for certified attendants, and that's upon approval.
Did, I mean, when you document it in there, does it automatically find a sub? Is that what the problem is?
I can answer the SubFinder system questions a little bit better. When an individual is going to be absent on the certified staff side, the SubFinder system automatically tries to locate a substitute by telephone or by email in order to get that substitute ready for either the next day or the leave that's appropriately placed there. But we can't have leave available for everybody. For example, we can't have leave for a custodian automatically posted because they don't have keys to get in the building. The same thing is true for cafeteria workers. So we have to develop another way to manage that. Hence, we are looking at something, and we'll come back to you.
Okay, so there's not a way that you can say, "Don't need a sub, just leave," in that system that you're dealing in right now?
Yes, we can say, "Don't need a sub." That is possible. We do have that possibility. Why don't we use the two?
Thank you. Sorry.
We don't use the two, because if we interface them, then we have the possibility of custodians being called, because we have people tracked in that system that may accidentally get one of those phone calls. So we don't upload the data from SubFinder or ESOP into our Olio system. We actually, you'll hear about that too, but we actually keep those on time cards and on scanner sheets, and that's why you'll hear the proposal, the pros and the cons for both.
I mean, I'm just trying to think of how it can be easier for you all to not have to manually do part of the job and electronically do part of the job.
We have a plan.
Okay. I'll wait.
I knew she did.
Twenty-two, contract for development updating of all job descriptions. We have rejected this recommendation from SPR. Financially, this is not feasible at this time. We have internally used outside sources, both educational and industrial-based, to do wage comparisons. We're asking for supervisors to annually review the job descriptions, make sure that we're posting jobs correctly each time an opening comes open. And currently, we have over two hundred jobs that have been reviewed since getting the SPR, and we'll continue this project with a hopeful completion date of April 1st, 2017. On twenty-three, ensure that neither policies, procedures, nor practices regarding overtime and compensatory time are in conflict with provisions of the Fair Labor Standards Act. We are in agreement with this. Policy CVFA, and that came before the board this past year, the Fair Labor Standards Act and the accompaniment forms have been reviewed by the district as well as site-level administrators. December 1st of this year will be the first time there's been a revision in FLSA since 2004, and currently, we're determining the impact of that new threshold and what that new threshold will have on our current practices. And then that threshold is set to be reviewed every three years. Number twenty-four, provide an online employee handbook. We do agree with that recommendation also, but we do withhold the ability to have one modification. We've placed online a support handbook and a certified handbook. There are certain policies that apply to certified. There are certain policies that apply to support, and that made it much easier, we felt, for our employees to be able to utilize that handbook. We make them aware of that as we onboard our employees of how they can find it and how they can search it, so that it makes it very user-friendly. Number twenty-five, contract for a compensation and classification study for all non-certified positions. At this time, we're undecided about this. This would be very costly, again, just like the compensation study mentioned previously, and I'm unaware of any company that specializes in educational settings. Our classified jobs are not always able to be compared to their counterparts in the business world.
If it's going to be very costly, and we don't see anybody else doing it, why did we not just say no?
If we were able to find a facility that could do cost comparisons in the educational setting, it would not be something that we would reject. We would need to see the financial feasibility of it at that time. I'm just unaware of any at this time, and that's why it's undecided.
Recommendation number twenty-six, develop a written manual for school secretaries regarding human resources and payroll functions. We accepted that recommendation with modification. We don't really feel like they need to know the payroll and HR functions, you know, how we get stuff done, but we feel like there might be some instructions that we could give them on a yearly basis or something, that we could give them in a manual that would help them, and maybe provide some sample forms and also reference policies that apply to each procedure. So upon completion of our desk manuals, we'll start that process.
Leah Osborne is unavailable for her response tonight, but develop a deeper expertise by using Olio by sending staff members to company-sponsored user conferences, informing an Oklahoma school district users group. We currently have an informal group. There's not a formal group in the state, but we have schools of like size and populations to Lawton Public Schools that regularly convene and conference call in order to problem-solve. This group communicates whenever there's a major change to a reporting system or any involvement in a new process that ensures that the processes that we use are the same as those of other districts of our size. In addition, Widenhammer, which is the owner of Olio, sponsors webinars that are easily accessible for any area. If we have a concern or a need, we can ask them for that particular item, and that subject-area item webinar will be available to us.
Number twenty-eight, revise these procedures to flow from employee Number 28, revise these procedures to flow from employee supervisor to the Human Resource Department. And they have three sub-points under this. The first one being notification of resignation. We agree with that. Currently, resignations do originate in the school site. The only time that that's an exception is during the summer while our schools are closed and administrative staff may not be available, then they come straight to Human Resources. But at that time, when a resignation is received that does not have a signature, I immediately process an email to that supervisor so that they know that a request to resign has been received. Receipt of a doctor's note for sick leave taken beyond the fifth consecutive day or beyond 10 days in a pay period. We agree with the implementation of this with modification. This is a prime example of a needed desk manual item because currently, doctor statements are most commonly turned into the secretaries and then attached to their time cards. But because we've got the abilities now to scan documentation in, that, that can come directly to Human Resources throughout the pay period instead of waiting for that end of pay so that, that communication can take place. We also need to include the process of return-to-work procedures in the manual and those, those two items would be great items to have in that secretarial manual. Prior approval of various forms of leave, we do agree with that. This is the practice that we currently use with the exception of the new extended leave approval required by Policy DEC as of May 2016. And then the fourth one is improve the hiring process. This is very vague in what they had in the SPR. Our jobs are posted with the minimum qualifications requirement. They did mention about us posting with minimum qualifications, but we realize that job experience can come in many different forms. An example, the education on the job training, so forth. This practice by posting with the minimum allows us to have a larger job applicant pool to get the best person that's qualified for the position. We're continually looking for ways to make the hiring process more succinct for both applicant and the supervisor. Presently, we're posting each job individually for, like our certified positions, our cafeteria managers, that type. We do have those positions that we have a high rate of turnover, an umbrella, posting as well as trying to post for each individual school to give the applicant more control of, of what jobs they're being considered for. And to date, just, just a point of information, we have almost 4,700 applicants since we've started the application portal. Recommendation number 30, eliminate the current time cards used by support employees in favor of a Scantron sheet similar to the one used for certified employees. I thought this was kind of humorous because it's a direct conflict with number 421, which indicated eliminating the scanner sheets for the certified personnel. So the support employees also, their, their leave is charged hourly, actually to the nearest quarter of an hour, so I don't see how a Scantron sheet could be effective in that way. Again, upon approval of a time and attendance software, we'll be able to eliminate both the time cards for the support staff as well as the Scantron sheets for the certified attendants.
Active when looking for?
We've been over the capital.
Sounds very hard.
Didn't we have like a 2017 deadline for that?
We have a 2017 deadline. I can speak to that. We are currently getting our figures together for equipment. We have the software that we possibly will use and we have the costs of that equipment. We haven't presented that to the board yet because we're still trying to ensure that it meets all of our needs instead of meeting one particular group and not meeting the other group. So we're going to begin the demo process with Zeldin's help and Leah's help, hopefully in January for this building and for the media center. And if all works as well as we hope that it will work, then we plan on, the next phase that would be transportation in March or April and then we will begin to find out how we're going to roll it out for everyone else.
Okay.
That concludes our presentation. Are there any other questions that you have?
Fantastic.
Thank you.
You did a great job.
Your report?
Under the report of superintendent, it's a pretty slim report. We just have the first and we decided to start combining the bond fund and sales tax fund. We're currently working on the projection for next year, so we'll have that, or the project for the upcoming year and so we will have that for you soon. I think we have November will be our next bond, community bond committee meeting and so we'll have a report then as well. So starting with questions over that. Not much movement lately, in other words. Item B on the superintendent's announcement, I have a few announcements. Start with the most important first, not necessarily the most important, but we have published author in the room, Ms. Snively here in the, in the front row is National Association of Special Education Teachers, August 2016, has published an article, Students with Traumatic Brain Injury: Observation Intervention by Pamela L. Snively. Annie, she's currently with us at Washington, correct? All right, so I'm very impressed, we're impressed. Not very many people have published anything, which is in a prestigious journal like that, so I'm pretty, I think that's pretty awesome, so thank you for, for representing LPS so Just a reminder, this is some, some things we, we need to be mindful of. Our LPS third graders, 91% in reading sufficiency act. That's up from 87% last year and even lower the year before. It's important to note that the State Department actually says, and it used to be for a while a disclaimer on their website, that according to the State Department, if everything's done with fidelity and all the conditions are met perfectly, we can reach 96%. It's ironic that the State Department requires 100%, but even their own research says with everything perfect, you can make 96%. So I'm very proud of our percentage of third graders. As the board knows, we did have, in cooperation with Fort Sill, and I have to brag on Colonel Curtis and his staff, we had a, an exercise at Freedom Elementary. I think it was very successful. We had Ms. Cordis, Mr. Smith, principal, Ms. Shanklin, several people worked together to make this happen, so I'm, I'm very thankful. We learned a tremendous amount to help keeping our students safer. Last, very recently also, we had a, a, there was a cooperative fundraiser with the Armored Services YMCA and they did a color run, which our own Ms. Dr. Polk did run in it. I did show up and I did pay my fee and get my T-shirt. I just didn't run.
I want to say your pitch.
I, I did not want, and Lynn Cordis, Lynn Cordis right here, she organized it on our end, so, yes, she did, go ahead. But anyways, we ran $1,400. I think that's pretty cool. I just didn't want them to throw Kool-Aid at me. I think, you know, it would stain me forever. Also before the board, you have a, a little laminated document. This is, you know, one of the things we've been talking consistently in our staff meetings and with our principals and teachers, it's just another step, trying to get, just keep people aware of suicide, really keeping people mindful of it. Any, any warning signs, any, just, the, the basic sign is if, if people have any concerns, they need to act upon it. They need to help that person, get that person to the right person or talk to the right people to intervene. And so we, we don't want to keep that on the back burner.
All of our teachers have any?
This, Ms. Walker, has prepared for all the principals. And did you, did she prepare off, for all the teachers as well?
No, but I can't.
Okay.
I think it'd be something that they should have, especially our secondary.
Yep, so we've got the principals this week and then we'll work on getting all the teachers soon. I think it's a good idea. It's a good idea. And my goodness, that's all my announcements for today. I ran out of good news, so, yes, that concludes my announcements.
Does anyone need anything removed from the consent agenda?
I'd like to recommend we remove page 17. Just table it till the next board meeting.
Do we have a motion?
I may accept the consent agenda with the exception of page 17.
Second.
Call her all, please.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Let's see what I'm here. No executive session need?
No, none that I've seen before.
Okay. Your personnel report?
Under item nine, no, item 13, Superintendent's Personnel Report, I have the vote to approve the employing, promoting, disciplining and receiving resignations of individuals certified and support salary personnel listed on pages 141 and 144. There is an addendum.
An addendum.
Which the board has before you.
So do we have a motion?
I make a motion we accept the personnel report.
I second. Call her all, please.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Okay. Any new business?
Yes, we don't very often have new business, but tonight I would like the board to consider some new business. In order to get, to move forward with Sheridan, actually, we received this about 5:30 yesterday afternoon, which is after the board deadline. There is a step that needs to happen in order for the demolition of Sheridan Road. We've, we've discussed this with Fort Sill, Randy Butler and no matter how this all evolves, it's got to be done and it can be transferred between whoever actually at the end takes responsibility for it. We would like to go ahead and do this. This is the asbestos survey, which helps actually get a firm estimate for the architect of what it's actually going to cost to do the asbestos abatement in the building. It has to be done in order to make that happen for the architect to actually finalize the bid process. This is not the bid process, this is just an initial step that needs to happen. We did consult, Mr. Smith did a great job. He consulted three separate companies. The bids ranged from $12,000 to $2,700 plus their daily fees and so what you have before you with Environmental Measurement, Environmental Measurements LLC represents the lowest of the three bids with all factors. Oh, it's, it's.
It's the extra page. There you go.
There you go, all right. And so we did, did due diligence of trying to get this done, but again, I would really, I think it would save us a considerable amount of time. This is something that has to be done no matter what. It's something that both Fort Sill and Martin Public Schools can use in the future and so I would recommend that, that we do this so we can get moving on it and, and take one more step toward the, the bid process.
Okay, so what are we actually voting on? That we actually let them make this bid or that we're spending money?
Oh, we're to allow Environmental Measurements to accept their proposal, to do the work for $2,700 plus the, the monitoring fees to do the asbestos survey. They come in and they look at the building and they make an estimate of what it's going to cost and what kind of work, not necessarily what it's going to cost, that's what the bidders do. They come in and say, "There's X amount of work to done in this room, this room, the total building has this." They make an assessment basically of how much asbestos is in the building and so that way bidders can make an informed decision on when they bid on it. They don't want to have any surprises.
But if we're not going to actually be in charge of the demolition, we're going to spend the money upfront, how are we going to get that money back?
This is something, as we, as we figure that out, no matter who does this, whether Fort Sill or, or we take on that responsibility, which we're still working through that, this is a transferable issue that can be done for either one. We do have the money in the, the Freedom. Regardless, we do have the money to do this without affecting our budget because we have, we have that roughly, that $400,000 or so left over for demolition expenses.
I thought we had spent that money already.
No, it's still, more or less, it's still sitting there waiting for us to use. So this would just be a chunk out of our existing budget. This would not put us over budget at all, so. It would be very helpful, like I said, it's helpful for both Fort Sill and for us moving forward as to not cause any more delays than necessary.
So we need a motion for that?
I would love the board to, I recommend the board approve that, yes.
We can, we can approve this and we need business.
Yes.
But if, but what about the other two board members? Shouldn't they be able to give the opportunity to look at it before we as three vote for it?
Board, I did, I did, I did inform them since they've been gone that this would be new business. You know, our board policy says a quorum needs to be present, which is three, and so by every measure of this board, this is a board meeting and so this would be the body that could make the decision, yes.
The, the record needs to show that in the event this is adopted, this does not in any way indicate that we are, we are assuming the responsibility for the demolition. That's still an issue to be, to be, to be settled and determined at a later date.
Absolutely, but this is transferable for Fort Sill or for us.
It's a, it's a step that needs to be taken though. We're just even beginning to move forward. Bids have to be taken and bids won't be able to really be, really could be taken, but there's likelihood that, that these bids will include a lot more for the abatement of the, of this, so it's in everyone's best interest, in my opinion, that we get this done. It's going to have to be done.
The architect can't prepare a bid without this.
I would assume we could do it much easier and less costly than the Corps of Engineers could.
No one has federal government works, probably. So I would say so.
So you don't both feel?
This has to be done. And, you know, the money, if, if in fact, it turns out that Fort Sill is going to tear down the building, then this cost could be transferred.
Okay.
And even if it isn't, it's a small price to pay to get this thing moving down the road. If we don't, if we don't approve it, we have to wait till our next board meeting and just sell things down.
I wouldn't bring it for new business if it weren't urgent. We rarely do new business, so I want to make sure we have plenty. I want to make sure we have plenty of understanding before we move in. Any questions about it, because I don't want any.
As I said, you all know, for sure.
I don't see any, any surprises that could pop up later on this.
I would make a motion that we approve the bid from Environmental Measurements LLC for an asbestos survey.
I'll second.
Call her all, please.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Okay. Our next regular board meeting is currently scheduled for Tuesday, September 6th. Do we need any consideration for?
Not that I can think of.
Okay. Any board announcements?
None.
All right, Mr. Jester?
I make a motion we adjourn.
I second. Call her all, please.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Yes, he did.